This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, so Megan, you're gonna take notes? Okay, so let's just call this work session the order. Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. Okay, so I did through, I sent Allison a message to send out to parents and teachers and families. So that went out on Friday. Just announcing the process that we're starting. We still have a lot more to firm up. Before we do anything with the work session though, President Gomez asked me to do something. We are going to have our joint session on the 10th. And Maren is right now the only person who has gotten back to Omar as to whether or not they're gonna go in person or be high, be hybrid and be on remote from home. And the reason why that's important is because we need to decide where we're gonna place people. So he is hoping that you would contact him tonight and just tell him whether or not you're going to be home. There must be eight people, but it's eight people of city council and school committee. Because it's a joint session, so to form their quorum. So he's just gathering the list. Now, we could all be in person. That would be 15 people, but we need to get back to him and let him know that. So can we make sure that we let him know that tonight? Just a quick email? And if you could CC me on that, just so I know? That would be great. Okay? All right, so that's that piece. And so the next piece, everybody got the resumes? All right? Now, posting internally did go out to the school district in case anybody wants to.
You're muted. It happened suddenly in the middle of you talking.
How? I didn't touch a thing. That is so funny. Thank you for catching that. I don't know where I was when you began that. Internally, it got posted for the district. So we might get a few more letters and resumes. But we need to decide today what we're going to do. We have four right now. We have a few things to do. We have to firm up some of the dates that we're gonna do stuff. We have our next working session, which will be for questions. That's on the 16th, so that's easy. And then Liz had come up with an idea that I thought was really interesting. Megan is unavailable 22nd through the 26th. So she was wondering, what if we made the site visits and the meet and greets that week? Since we can't meet, that would give the potential candidates time to come into the district, meet with people, then do a meet and greet. The benefit of that is twofold. One, they would not be exhausted the night of their interview. And the second is that that would give the community a week to process who they met, what they were thinking, and send us emails so that they could feel like they weighed in. And at least gave us some feedback. I thought that was a really good idea, but we need to decide that that's what we want to do in terms of our schedule. So I'm wondering what everybody else is thinking.
I like the idea. I do. I think it goes to your point of everyone has everybody has a chance in the community and they, you know, folks can, you know, get a good idea of site visits and we don't have to be rushed. So I'm in favor of that idea.
Ben, Maren, Megan?
That would be the week of the 22nd, you said?
Yeah, so that would be the, remember Megan has a week where she's not available. And so we didn't make any appointments. So that would be, yeah, 22th through 26th.
Okay, and then, and then the interviews would be?
And then we set the interviews to start. Let me pull that up again. Somebody else might have it ready a little better than me.
Yeah, I think we have to revisit all those dates because there's a lot of conflicts. So I think we just, I don't think we need to say, I mean, yeah, we started them on Tuesday, the 30th with different variables. So I think we just need to revisit all of those dates for actual interviews.
Right. Regardless, I think it's a good idea to, we might as well use that week to have those things happen. Spread it out a little bit. That's great. I have no objections.
Yeah, I just think it will really give people a chance to think about what they heard, what they saw, and contact us and feel like they had that ability to contact us. So, so should we say that's a definite? So that would be part of our schedule? All those in favor?
Yes.
Since it's Zoom, we'll roll call anyway, sorry. Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
To make a motion?
Yep. We should have. Thank you. It's a work session, it's not.
Yeah, where's Sue?
Yeah, it's a work session. I just want to to vote on these things, but I don't think we have to be quite so formal, but we certainly can redo it really quickly.
All right, that we have the meet and greet and site visits that last weekend, May the 22nd through the 26th.
Who's going to second?
I'll second that.
All right, okay, we'll do it really quickly again. Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye. Forgot my last name.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. It's not something that we really needed to vote on because, again, this is a work session and our job is to just try to figure out how we're gonna straighten this out and make it a little more fine tuned. So as Maren said, we threw out a bunch of dates. And we were really going quite quickly that night. And I'm looking, trying to put it up really quickly. I've got May, I've got possible dates of May 30th, June 1st, June 2nd, 5, 6, I mean, June 5th, June 6th, and June 9th. There was a question mark on the 30th and a question mark on the 1st of June.
But there is also some conflicts in there with with like senior graduation and some other things like that, right?
Yes, so graduation.
So it looks like the May 30th is fine. We're, we can hold that one, right? 6:00 PM on May 30th? I don't see anything on the senior calendar for that.
I can't do May 30th.
Okay, so you found out you can't because there was a question mark on that one. Okay. So now we're looking at June 1st. And I think when I checked.
There's an ice cream social at 6 o'clock. Senior awards, senior video, ice cream social, 6 to 8.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like we want to have it.
So we're gonna take that one off the books.
Yeah.
Okay.
So now we're at.
And graduation is Friday, the 2nd.
Yeah, correct. Take it off, got it?
Yeah.
So that.
So then we're looking.
It does seem a little weird then that we're asking these candidates to come to our district the week of the 22nd. Now, the week of Memorial Day, week of the 29th, there's gonna be no interviews. And then we're looking at an interview starting on the 5th.
Yeah. Well, so it might seem a little weird, but I think there's a benefit to that. So I'm thinking, okay, you come the 22nd through the, the 22nd through the 26th. You've met with some of the staff. Then you did a meet and greet. You know the questions that got asked of you there. I think it can give you some time to formulate your answers. And to feel like you had, you know, time to digest what you saw and learned from the community. So I think in a way it works to the advantage to have that cooling off quiet period where, you know, you've got Memorial Day weekend. You don't have to worry about it. You've got a week to process what you really want the community to know during your interview.
So can I just throw a question out there to Liz actually then? Because that just seems like a, you know, one of the reasons why things are consolidated in terms of the standard process is because they're potential looking at other positions and that we sort of, I mean, it's, we get caught up into that speed. I can imagine these candidates may also, I don't know how many other interim superintendent positions are out there that these people may be considering or being interviewed for. So how much do we need to be thinking about that as a part of this process? And waiting all the way until the first week of June to do our interviews? And Liz, I'd love for your feedback on that.
Sure, I think that none of the candidates spoke to me about any other positions that they're in the running for right now. One is, Cindy, I'm sorry, I had some problem with the volume. I had to shut down my computer and come in and out a few times. Did you name the candidates?
No, no.
Okay, so one is completing an interim assignment, June 30. One is, is completing their professional role, June 30, and retiring. One is actively seeking a superintendent position. And the other has been in interim in two other districts and has done a nice job in those districts. Is currently working as a principal because she just, I'm sorry, the individual just had competed in a couple of searches and felt like it was time to take a step back and get back to the work that, that she loved the most, which is being closer to children. So none of them, that's the long answer, that I know, is actively seeking another position right now, Maren.
Okay, and waiting until June? Basically, that would end up waiting until June 10th, 9th at earliest potentially, I mean, maybe even the following week to make our decision for someone who's starting July 5th potentially, like.
Well, so having the week in May, that last week in May, full week, for them to do the site visits to your district and to talk to folks also gives members of your community the opportunity to provide you feedback, right? And to do whatever research on their own they're going to do. We, you know, people like to do that and that's fine. And the possibility then of doing two interviews in an evening. So if you doubled up on June 5th and June 6th, you could potentially come back on the 9th and make your decision. Because you're not committed, nor are the candidates, to a full day in district and then doing the interviews.
So we might get a few more resumes because we posted internally. Just in case somebody from the current staff was interested in the position. So we might get a couple extra. I don't think we'll get a lot. But I think we should plan on two interviews a night. I'm willing to do three in one night. I mean, depending on what time we do them for. But it can be a long night and I don't want to have people's brains be fried. I'm looking to have us do like, right now, I'm looking at 5, 6, and 9 are the only days we have available. If we get two extra applications, then it seems to me that we would have to do 5, 6, 9, and then maybe have the meeting on the 12th to do the vote. Does that?
Maybe we're jumping a little fast ahead on that, but so it does sound though that having two weeks between seems acceptable is what I'm hearing.
Yep.
The one thing I wanted to throw out there to the public as well, I just saw somebody raise their hand, is again, I just want to reiterate that this, because this is a working group, there is no public speak during this period. So it's an opportunity for you to listen to our process and to what we're working through. But it's not a time for public to weigh in or speak in any way today. So.
You're welcome to email us.
But you're welcome to email us and you're welcome to come tomorrow night to our regular school committee meeting and public speak at that time.
Yep. Confirm on the dates, are we holding time on Monday, June 5th and Tuesday, June 6th for double header interviews? And what time do we want on those days?
Liz, you were thinking an hour or an hour and a half for each interview?
As I recall the discussion, I think an hour and a half was the minimum.
Yeah.
That you all talked about. An hour and a half gives you a good interview. You could go as much as two hours. That's a lot of interview space. Again, having that a little bit of extra time in between those interviews and the day that you make the selection gives you the opportunity, if you wanted to follow up with the candidate with any individual questions, that kind of thing. It's totally up to you, however much time you want to spend with the candidate. Please, let's go ahead and do that. I have seen candidates interview for two hours and everybody believes it's a pretty long interview.
What if we do like 4:30 to 6:00 and then 6:30 to 8:00 on those days? Does that work?
That works for me. That makes sense to me.
Committee? So we'd be blocking 4:30 to 8:00 on Monday, the 5th, and Tuesday, the 6th?
Yeah.
That's fine for me. I can do that.
I would rather start at 5, just, but.
So we could do 5 to 6:30 and then 7 to 8:30? I'm okay with going to 8:30.
Me too.
Yep, that works.
Better, Maren?
Is this on the 5th we're talking?
5th and 6th, yes.
On the 6th, I'm in a, I'm at a conference and I'm speaking that evening at 6 o'clock.
Well, that can be two places at once, I guess.
Well. If it was just a conference, I'd, you know, go to a room, but part of the speaking.
Okay, so the 6th, so that's the 5th.
The Wednesday, did we rule that out?
So the way I'm looking at this, we had the 5th, 6th, the 8th got scratched out. Does anybody know why the 8th got scratched out?
I have a night meeting that night.
You have a what?
I have a night meeting. Unfortunately. Did we scratch out the 7? I have nothing on my calendar for the 7th, but someone else might have. Wednesday, the 7th?
Um, the 7th? Well, I've got written down that it's the full city council public hearing on the budget.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
I mean, should we be throwing out there to Sunday, the 4th? Or Saturday, the 6th? I don't know if we want to, I mean.
I'm okay with the weekend day, if that's acceptable to the group and to the candidates.
What do you think?
That would be great.
I think that, sorry. So you'd be imagining that as the third interview date potentially? Or the date that you'd make your decision?
Interview date. That would actually be our, so we're thinking, could we do interviews on like Sunday and Monday, the 5th?
So.
I've actually just realized I'm probably out of town that weekend.
Yeah, Saturday might be a better day for candidates than Sunday. Respectfully.
Do we have availability on Saturday?
I'm probably out of town the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. Possibly even the 31st, so. I don't have that definitive yet, but.
All right, first of all, all of us are too busy.
But if we go back to that 20, I know now it's going really fast, but that 22nd to the 26th, that's another one of those ones where I'm out of town, but I can be on Google Meet or Zoom. For the good of the district, let's not push interviews out to mid-June.
So that, that might actually be really helpful. So let's see, what if we did Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Would be site visit days if we only have four. I think all this is gonna change by next week if, if we end up having two more candidates. I think that's, that would be the only time we'd have to readjust. And that's another work session, so we could do that. I just want to firm these dates up as much as we can and understand that they might not be perfect until next week.
Is that for everybody else, that 22nd through the 26th?
Friday, the 26th is fine with me. I would do a Friday meeting.
Do you want to like hold four days that week or five days that week? And I'll just plan on joining virtually?
I mean, we have school committee on the 23rd.
Right, oh yeah.
Do we have city council on the 25th?
No. No, the, the joint meeting is going to be the 10th, the 18th, and the 31st. So those are the meetings that have been set up for that piece.
So Monday, Wednesday, I mean, we could even hold Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That means we're gonna spend potentially all five evenings together that week, but.
Then that kind of mixes our whole idea of giving people time in between. So let's, let's, let's first look at June. We can't do the 7th. The 8th is not good. The 9th is possible as an interview day. We could do the 10th for our, no.
No, I'm out of town.
Okay. Wow, this is really tough, huh?
So then, so the 10th and 11th is the weekend. And then that next week, I'm away in the other conference. And again, I can be virtual, but the 13th to the 16th, I'm away again.
All right, so we're not holding the 6th, we're not doing interference on the 6th? Because somebody came up with a conflict, is that correct?
Yes, the mayor is presenting at a conference on the 6th.
Okay.
So really what we have is that Monday, the 5th could work and Friday, the 9th could work.
Correct.
And otherwise, that whole week is out. What was the 8th? I'm sorry, I'm not remembering this at that moment, is that?
Those are senior events. The 8th is you, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, the 12th could be the vote. Yes, the 12th is a Monday. Yes, that would work?
Yeah, that works.
All right, and then, so if we did the 5th, the 9th, and what if we did the 26th, May 26th, which is a Friday?
That just seems really broken up.
I know it does, but, but everybody's away. So if you're away or the mayor's speaking or Megan is presenting, we need to just say we're gonna have the 5th and the 9th for interviews. And if we get more than four candidates, we're gonna decide on four to interview.
Well, so, but we, what about the 12th?
And then that would be, the 12th would be our vote.
Well, no, 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 don't, don't dictate when we're voting, please. Is the 12th available for interviews?
I didn't dictate it. I'm tossing it out.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, like.
Yes, we could do the 12th and then we could have a meeting the 14th.
Well, we don't, we could also do a final vote on our 13th school committee meeting on the 13th and we'd have public speak as a part of people coming in as part of our school committee. They could come and do public speak on before our vote as well.
That would work.
So potentially, we've got six slots of interviews between the 5th, the 9th, and the 12th. And a decision on the 13th. Another way to work it.
Yes. Yeah, that makes for a long, long meeting on June 13th, but I'm okay with that.
When are the meet and greets in that?
We would still hold the meet and greets the 22nd through the 26th.
No. Shoot, that is, I'm, that's when I'm in the air. One day, 13th. But when we were last, did that not? I don't know, I realized that we didn't have a quorum. I'm actually, like, I'm on the plane on the 13th, leaving, I think, Boston at 6:00. Okay.
We won't have a quorum without, for that school committee meeting.
Can't even do that meeting, darn.
Well, we would have a quorum. But you don't want to have a meeting without your vote. That, that just would not work. So that won't work. All right, I'm gonna make a rule, nobody can travel anywhere. We'll figure it out. That's what tonight is all about, is just trying to figure it out. This is, what is complicating this, in case people are wondering, is we're also doing this joint meeting with the city council to fill the vacancies. So we have a limited number of days that we're actually working with and people have jobs. So that is, that is what's complicating it. So we need to.
Cindy, will we have two new members for all this?
No, not, not, not till then. Well, wait a minute. We actually, we're gonna do our joint meeting with the vote for our school committee members on the 31st.
Of June, of May?
Of May, yeah. Those were the days that went out. President Gomez sent them out and everybody came back and agreed to the 10th, the 18th, and the 31st.
And the, the new members will just, they'll step right in?
Yes, I believe so. They would be sworn in right away.
Okay. So they'll be part of these?
They would be part of this. But we need to decide now what days we're going to look at for process. We might change that a little next week, but I don't think it's gonna change much. We really need to boil down to what days are available.
Well, it seems like we need to potentially change our school committee meeting from the 13th. And then we can still keep six appointment times being, you know, the 5th, the 9th, and the 12th. And we're gonna need to move the 13th to a different night potentially, maybe. I don't, depending on people's schedules, but.
And when would we vote?
Well, you can have the meeting on the 13th without me because the two new members will be in, so you will have a quorum. Unless you want those to be. The vote to be that night. Depends how many different times you want to have meetings.
Well, we need to have a, we're gonna be also discussing who's, I mean, the candidates, we need to discuss the candidates in full, too.
See, put a regular school committee meeting on the thirteenth, and then we can find another day. To discuss and vote.
Like the fourteenth?
Like the fourteenth? I could do the fourteenth. Virtually.
Mayor? That works for me.
I'm juggling different calendars and.
I know, I know.
Trying to, um. So. Yes, I can, um, on the fourteenth, but I do. I have a hold. That there might be a city council meeting as needed.
What if we made the meeting on the fourteenth be earlier?
Sure.
It's not gonna be a, it's the the fourteenth would be. Our full debate and discussion about the candidates, so it's not like we're just gonna say voted. It's gonna be, I mean, we spent two hours debating three candidates, right?
Uh huh, we did.
So, um. I mean, here's, here's the thing, too, like, right now, we have four candidates. We may not, we we may or may not have somebody from within the district. Um, put forward their name, um, we haven't really discussed timing on when that's going to close. But we may or may not need the twelfth as an interview spot. We may be able to do that as a vote spot.
Correct.
Correct, but I still think we need one backup date for the vote if we. Um, just to lock it in, because you can hear how busy we all are. And we want to make sure that we're available to do that last piece.
To just limiting the number of interviews we do to four maximum, regardless of how many candidates we have.
How would you do that?
So.
We don't need to interview every single person that puts their name forward.
A cutoff date.
No, I know, we're gonna decide tonight how many want to interview anyway, but so, all right.
And we can have those two dates, let me flip back on my other screen, we have. The fifth and the ninth for double header interviews, and then the twelfth for discussion and vote.
I'm okay with that. And we decide uh at our next session.
Which four?
Which four we would do, and that gives people, um, the internal people time to to apply.
Uh, okay, yeah.
What do you think, everybody?
Good, Mary.
Liz has something, Liz, help us.
Thank you. I might suggest that you just hold on to that fourteenth if everyone is available, I'm not certain, um. I mean, I know you want somebody for a one-year position, right, potentially two. Um, and preferably, I would think you would want somebody with that experience, having led. Uh, whatever their their district or organization is. I don't know what you'll find internally. Now, perhaps you'll have some great internal candidates that are willing to step up. You also have to think about maintaining their position for the one year, right, if they're. If they're considered, might, which might mean having another interim in your district.
Yeah, there's not many. Potential candidates for this position, so.
Just hang on to it. I'd say just hang on to it if you need it. If you don't need it, it's a, it's a lucky night, take the kids for ice cream, right?
Yeah, so so, Mayor, let's say we um. We do the fourteenth, we hold on to that, and the city council might potentially need another meeting, couldn't they bump it to the twenty first? Is there anything stopping them from doing it the next Wednesday or the next day on the fifteenth?
I don't think so, but I also don't want to speak for the council.
Right.
Um, there are some votes that they have to take that are are tied to dates on the calendar. Um. For closing the fiscal year.
So what was the time that your potential meeting was on the fourteenth?
Six. So hold four P M. to six P M. on the fourteenth for just in case. That works on my side.
Yeah, I mean, I could do, I could hold the fourteen, like, potentially.
Four to six on the fourteenth?
Yeah, I think I can do that. I don't see any conflicts.
Can can we definitely do that? Not, I don't, I I'm not trying to push people, but if we think we might not lock that in. And I just think we are so tight right now, we need to lock these dates in.
I I agree with that, we gotta lock them in.
All right, so let's firmly lock in four to six on the fourteenth. These are our potential meeting days, five, nine, twelve and fourteen. And our times are five to six thirty and seven to eight thirty. Okay, and the fourteenth is a potential. Voting day. Could be the twelfth, and we'll know next week when we do our work session.
Uh huh.
Um, but otherwise, the backup is the fourteenth, four to six. I think we did it.
Works for me.
We have days left in. All right.
Oh, shoot. Um, I'm I'm so sorry, um. The ninth, I am, I'm, I'm, I'm away. It's, yeah. I'm so sorry. Lindsay just sent me a message saying, no, you can't do the ninth. Thank you, Lindsay.
All right. I thought we were gonna be so.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm very sorry about that.
That's okay, everybody's busy, everybody's looking at their calendars, um.
I think we've got to. Move back to looking at the twenty, so we could the twenty second again, then. And I know you, Megan, you'd be able to join by Zoom.
That's fine with me.
How disjointed would it feel to do um interviews on the? Twenty sixth. The fifth, the twelfth. How disjointed would that feel? I I think since we're already from the fifth to the twelfth. It's not much different.
Well, what about, I mean. If we're trying to put three days on the schedule, I mean, what about the? Twenty fifth and twenty sixth? I mean, what if we even just, what about the twenty fourth, twenty fifth, twenty sixth? What are those days looking like? For other people?
They're okay for me.
They're okay for me virtually.
Yeah, I can do those nights, nights are good.
And what were the the dates?
The twenty fourth, twenty fifth and twenty sixth. We have a school committee on the twenty third.
The twenty fourth is the vote on the, on uh, is, I've got a budget hearing.
Okay.
All right, and here's the weird thing, if we. I don't want to turn this crazy, if we do twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. That means we're doing interviews, the two new school committee members do not get to be a part of those interviews unless they watch. And then we vote on, say, the fifth or the ninth. Um, that just feels like it's not gonna work.
Well, we don't have, I mean, un- unless I'm not understanding process, um. They can be sworn in. After we, they can be sworn in before the the thirteenth, when our next school committee meeting is.
Yes.
And not sworn in during that process.
Right.
Which is already a little.
But we're not even voting on them till May thirty first.
Exactly.
So they would. So they just would not get a vote, is the point, or they.
They wouldn't be members. Until after this process is done on an interim.
Okay, so you're thinking we do twenty four, twenty five, twenty six?
They can't do twenty four, we can do twenty five and twenty six, it sounds like.
What about the twenty second, Monday, the twenty second?
Liz, you had something to say, Liz, help us.
You're muted, Liz.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I think the initial intent around having those site visits during that week and allowing members um of the community. The opportunity, both the school community during the day, and then the community at large in the evening to meet folks. Have sort of a a a period of to debrief um with friends or colleagues and and do what they want to do is a good idea, I think that. You might be selling yourself short if you tried to do it all in one week, um, I know I remember hearing some folks, although. To be fair, uh, the process, I think that you followed the first time around is was a typical schedule for a superintendent search, it was nothing out of the ordinary. Um, I think that um out of um a a real big measure of concern, I would say, give them the opportunity to have that feedback, that opportunity to do their own. Have their own conversations among themselves. I think your community really just wants to be. Heard and seen as part of this process, and you might really serve yourself well by providing a little bit of time to do that. Now, um, I know we all love our Saturdays, no one more than me um in May and June, but um maybe June, the. Um, sorry, May the twenty seventh is a Saturday.
Memorial Day weekend, I'm not, that should be a.
It's Memorial Day weekend, how the holidays, how could I forget?
I I, so I mean, I think that there is a way for us to. Allow for community members to have site visits on the week of the twenty second, still happening. Have people coming to town, having people to meet, have time for feedback. Um, and not necessarily take our vote by the twenty sixth. Um, and then we would just need to us find a slot sometime in there for, you know, and that could be all the way out to the fifth. Uh, it could be our decision-making time if there's nothing else, we might be able to do. You know, some of the days, like we chose the first, we cut out the first because of the social time, if we're not meeting at. The high school to do our, to do our meeting discussion, we could meet. And have feedback and have, you know, public speak or, you know, whatever we wanted to add in there on the first potentially. And have a decision-making process on the first, and that would still give everybody almost a week to. Think about their, you know, to mull it over, to and to give feedback, and then let's have a discussion and a vote, so I think that there's still ways that. We, just because we have moved the interviews up to and include the meet and greet and. Other community meetings, you know, key staffing meetings happening on the week of the twenty second. And interviews happening the week twenty second, we could still give that almost week to the first to do our decision process. Um, and I think that that would still meet the the feedback from the community, the involvement of the community. Um, and all those key parts of this.
Um, so. Um, I'm losing track of of dates a little bit, the, um, so. What about the? The twenty sixth, the fifth and the twelfth? And then there's a week between each candidate.
The piece that feels feels weird to me about that is is. Is interviewing the candidates, I mean, those are so many weeks across our own interviewing process.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's, we want to give time for community feedback and to think over stuff, but for us to have. Uh, interviews across three weeks feels uh. Pretty hard to do, yeah, I mean, because I think we potentially could do two interviews on the twenty second. Um, we could have those two candidates meeting, community member, you know, keep meeting, doing meet and greets and doing. Uh, interviews with s- s- key school staff that we'd listed off previously, we could do the same then on the twenty fifth. And the twenty sixth, um, we'd have to, we'd have to mull, we have, there's some things we've got to massage there and and how best to do all that, but, um.
The.
Let me just ask one last question, I'm not trying to drive us all crazy with extra dates. Was there any reason why we couldn't do May nineteenth, Friday, May nineteenth? Because I'm thinking if we did Friday, May nineteenth, May twenty second, May twenty fifth, and vote on the twenty sixth.
Well, the only reason why the May nineteenth is that's a week and a half away, so, um, and we wouldn't have our questions even. Discussed until next Tuesday. But I mean, that's, I wouldn't say that's an impossible thing, we would need to, we would need to make some decisions. Tonight of which candidates we're inviting. Or at least to starting that process, and I mean, yeah, I don't know. How, when you put out the offer within the district for internal candidates, did you put a deadline? I mean, we had a deadline of externals of this past Friday, right?
Yeah, um. So there was a back and forth, and it was posted. I think today. And I think that the idea is that it would close on the sixteenth, which is when we're meeting again.
And on the nineteenth, I'm at a conference on that Friday.
Okay, I was just tossing that out, I'm trying to squeeze a little bit more time, um.
Does the twenty second, twenty fifth and twenty sixth work for people as three days, though?
It works for me.
The twenty second?
Monday, the twenty second.
I have a budget meeting.
What time?
Five.
Good.
And it's the school budget.
How long does that run?
Ah, ah.
It could be long. Okay.
Well.
Yeah. I mean, the school is usually one of the longest because it's so big.
Well, because what I was wondering is, could we squeeze a seven to eight thirty? In on the twenty second? And then do two on the twenty fifth. One on the twenty sixth. But then that would mean if that's the only day we have, that would mean voting that night.
No, no, we don't have to vote that night, still.
Well, that's the point, so we have to kind of figure it out so that we have that delay, because that's what we're trying for, that little bit of delay.
Well, the, again, if if we were able to figure out a way to squeeze. It, not squeeze, it's not the right word, if we're a way to figure out a way to have up to four potential interview spots. Or five, you know, depending, I mean, I really, again, we don't need to interview every single person that puts forward their name, um, and so that's not a requirement for us. So, but if we were to keep four to five. Spots, and then we were to have the meeting to do the actual debate and decision on Thursday, the first. The only conflict that I remember on the first was that it was the senior social at the high school, and so we didn't want to do the interviews there. During that, but if we're doing a meter meeting either at Fifty Payson or on Zoom. Um. We can do the third, the first as a decision meeting.
Uh huh. I keep losing the screen as I move back and forth, the only question, so it's a social, but also, now I've lost the other screen. It says senior awards, senior video, ice cream, social, six to eight. Um. Do parents attend that?
Yes.
Uh huh. So they would, they would have.
We would be boxing out any parents of seniors.
Well, boxing out, meaning.
If we did, if we did it six to eight, I, what if we did it four to six? Or, you know, I mean, I could do three to six. Or, you know, I mean, I could do three to six.
Find my other screen. Yeah, I'm available that day. Is this June first?
Wait. Yeah.
Yeah, we already crossed out June first because it wasn't a good day for people.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm, I'm seeing, actually, that's when I might have meetings in Denver, so, um, and didn't even, sorry.
What if we planned, is it crazy to schedule, oh, no, you're away, the mayor's away on the tenth? Is that right?
Yeah, on the ninth and the tenth, yep.
The ninth of June, you're away?
I was just like, do like, um, three or four interviews on a Saturday and then decide on, you know, the following week, but the weekends are, are rough anyway.
What, what about June twelfth through the fifteenth?
So that is, I'm flying out from-
Oh, that's right, yeah.
No, I'm driving distance.
Gotcha.
So the twelfth, the twelfth, you're available, Ben, right?
I'm not gonna be, so I think I leave Boston at like six PM on Tuesday. Um, and it's-
Thirteenth, so that makes you available on the twelfth.
Yep. And I can do the fourteenth and the fifteenth remotely, but I'm flying all day, well, what is it, like six or seven hours to Portland on Tuesday and Friday? Which means those ones hard.
So I will just throw back into this, I'm sorry, I just got confirmation. So I am available on the first. We still have to juggle around, um, some other things, but, uh, I'm, I am available now on the first.
What does the third look like, that Saturday? What if we did the first, the third, and then we had our, um, discussion and vote on the fifth?
That works for me.
Depends on what time on the third. I can do, like, after five.
Saturday night.
Really? You can't do anything in the afternoon?
My son's birthday party.
Oh, oh, we're gonna have to, you're gonna have to attend to that.
You guys can all, um, we can do it there.
Are you gonna have a bounce house?
Indeed.
Okay, then I-
And what was the reason why we can't do Sunday?
It's a Sunday.
All right, we're, but we're, i- if we're all available on Sunday, the fourth, and we did four, five,
That gives like less than twenty-four hours for people. That's like the opposite of Liz's point of sort of like, let them think about it and get feedback back and-
Well, no, no, we're, we didn't, we didn't lock in a time of when we're making the decision yet. We're-
I'm assuming we had that, um, the fifth as the other time. I guess we still have the twelfth as available dates.
That's what I'm thinking. We do four, fifth, and decision on the twelfth.
Um.
I can do that.
And, and the first is, no, we wanted to not do the first because of the senior.
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna have a lot of very disappointed parents because that's a big day for seniors.
With the awards and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I mean, so potentially, we could do the third, fourth, and fifth, right? We're saying just not in the afternoon.
You're saying start at what time, Ben?
Uh, be safe, probably five is, is, is probably good.
Yeah. This is important enough. I will, you know, I would do a Saturday, you know, like, again, that would be five to six-thirty and seven to eight-thirty, then a Saturday, uh, Sunday, and then decision on a Monday.
Liz, how does that play out with, like, are we getting, what do you think, creamed again for not making it accessible?
Well, the, we can still hold, we can still hold off to the twelfth for a decision.
Yeah.
We, we've got, that would be the Saturday, Sunday, Monday would be our interview meetings, and then we would-
Yep.
Come back.
And as long as they're recorded for folks to watch. Is that what you're sort of thinking?
Yeah.
And the meet and greets would still be in May?
Yes.
That seems, that seems pretty good.
I don't think the meet and greet should be the week of graduation. There's too much going on with the seniors. I think the perfect week for that is, um, the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, like we had thought. I think that, that will, people can concentrate just on the candidate. If we try the next week, I think we're just gonna have very, that's an exciting time, but that's way, teachers are busy, students are busy, families are busy. I like the idea of three and four and decision on the twelfth. If we need the fifth, we do three, four, five. And I can do that on the twelfth.
I can do that.
It eats up people's weekends, but-
Yeah, I would also say that, yeah, I, I would say that we, if we hold those three straight days, I, I mean, I like having the interviews tight to each other so that we can really just sort of be all percolating the same thoughts right around the same time. Once we actually now decide on candidates, that's when we can also decide how many slots we actually need. We may only want to do four interviews, and then we can shift those around, uh, and choose not to do what, you know, because there's reasons not to do it on a Saturday evening for Shabbat. There's reasons to not do it on Sunday. There's plenty of different reasons to do it for different religious reasons, but being a, uh, non-religious entity, um, as the public school, that we want to be respectful, but at the same time, um, we can try, we can mull around with those six slots that then we would be holding space for.
Yeah. Did we hear what Liz had to say about that? I think, I think we just got carried away talking, talking again, Liz.
You know, I think we could certainly ask candidates about a Saturday evening, um, in June. But I wouldn't be surprised to hear that others have plans. You know, we could certainly do our best with the candidates. And that's what I can say about that.
Right.
I also, I guess I'm wondering about the timing of notifying the candidates because we're waiting until now the sixteenth. And I, I want you all to be mindful that when you're discussing any of the candidates and whether or not they'll be interviewed, you are doing this all in public session. Right? And, you know, that can be, um, just have to be thoughtful around that.
I, and I don't know if we need to wait until the sixteenth. I had assumed we were coming to this meeting to make those decisions tonight. So I think that, I understand that you've now, that the internal piece has been, but I mean, I, I think we can still re- I think we need to discuss and discuss the four external candidates we have and decide, you know, which of those four that we want to offer interviews to. And then we can offer six slots and people can, you know, say, I'm not available on a Saturday evening, I'm not available on a Sunday evening, and, or what have you, and that, that we then narrow those down. Um.
On the other hand, Maren, it might be a great opportunity to come into East Hampton and spend the day downtown and have an early or late dinner.
Plenty of good restaurants to do that in.
Well, the good news is that no matter when we do it, if we're ending at eight-thirty, somebody still has their Saturday night or their, their Sunday night. That's, you know, we're not keeping them till eleven, till ten.
So Cindy, would you propose that the Sundays an evening as well?
I, I, I am flexible. I will do my schedule around whatever, but it's sounding like, um, does Sunday have to be the evening? Could it be earlier for people?
I think it would be good to have earlier.
Oh, I'd love earlier, but-
I mean, we could start at four.
Four to seven.
Instead of five.
Yeah. That sounds fine to me.
Yeah, four to five-thirty and then, um, six to seven-thirty.
Seems good.
Okay.
Does that sound like we've got, I mean, and we're gonna have, you know, there's the potential that we're gonna have to adjust, but, um, that gives us, you know, again, worst-case scenario, we still have the twelfth. Let's, let's keep the twelfth as a backup and let's hold that for those, you know, that entire, what did we say, five to eight o'clock? We just hold that as well as a, as a backup.
Well, we're hoping that would be when we discuss and vote, right?
Right.
Correct.
Twelve is, the twelfth is the vote.
Turn these notes out, of course.
But worst-case scenario, if we have to change that and have to have interviews on the twelfth, we can, we can recome back and figure out a different day that we would be having our actual vote. Um, if worst-case scenario needed to have that happen. So I, I think if we look at Saturday, do we want to do, um, we're doing five-
To six-thirty and seven to eight-thirty.
Yep, and then Sunday, the third, the fourth, we're looking at, starting at four o'clock and at six o'clock, the two interviews.
Yes, yep.
And then on Monday, the fifth, five o'clock and six-thirty, five o'clock and seven o'clock, excuse me.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, do we all have a hundred percent confirmation that the five of us are available those four days?
We've got the third, the fourth, the fifth.
And the twelfth.
And the twelfth.
The third, what time to what time?
On what?
Five to six-thirty and seven to eight-thirty.
Yeah, I can do these days.
Megan's, yes. Mayor, yes.
Also.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion, just, let's just do it and get it done. So we are gonna be putting on, locking in interview times on Saturday, the third, at five PM and seven PM. On Sunday, the fourth, at four PM and six PM. And Monday, the fifth, at five PM and seven PM. And then we're also holding space for Monday, the twelfth, from five to eight PM. Right now, that's our backup. That's our dis- decision-making time, but if something goes through the process when we, uh, actually schedule these things, if something else needs to take, that would be a flow over day for that, and we'd have to come up with a new date for a decision in a process. Okay?
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right, we're gonna vote on these days, these times. Maren did a really good job of outlining them. Everybody's ready, Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor, uh, mayor.
Mayor, that's your call, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Krasinski, aye. Oof, good. All right, and so now we have the site visit days, we have the interview days, we have the interview times. Good.
So do we want to, I mean, you just said we have those days, but do we need to look at what we're doing for those in-person days and go through a series? We're not gonna, we don't have to come up with the exact timing of it all, but I think we want to put the, the, you know, we were talking about a half-day, and we were gonna put them out, then potentially for the twenty-second to the twenty-fifth, right? So we've got five days or twenty, yeah, five days. It's the twenty-sixth. And then depending on people's schedules, they'll be able to be coming to one of those appointments. And now, the other question I have that goes along with that is, if they're an internal candidate, they're still going through that same process, they're probably just not meeting with themselves because they're probably gonna be one of these positions that will have people meeting if they're an external candidate, right? So the key pieces, if I'm remembering correctly, and we can say if there's more than this, but we felt that the special education director, Sarah, the curricula, director of curriculum, Julie, the, um, we were talking about then the principals of both schools, correct? And then also doing, having Larry do a site visit of the two different sites as well.
Maren, did you mention the business manager?
And, and then, correct, that's, so that's the fifth position then that we would want people to meet with would be with Nick as the business manager. And then obviously, just to say it out loud again, the sixth piece then that people would be meeting is, um, with a public time meet and greet for a space to, for a space for that to happen.
Mm-hmm. I missed one of them. Special education, curriculum, principals.
Business manager.
Yep.
Business manager, site visits.
Site visits.
And meet and greet.
Yep.
May I make a suggestion that when candidates are at the two schools, they can meet with some high school students and some middle school students? Think you want to give your students the opportunity to have a chat with the candidates? Always a good idea.
I agree.
Off for that, a hundred percent.
Yep.
Is there anyone on the city side that you want the candidates to meet? The chair of the city council, or is there anyone at city hall that they would be interfacing with that it might be good to have some reaction from somebody there?
Well, again, I'm going to what we had people meeting during the, I mean, I guess we did have, um, chief, uh, fire chief and, and police chiefs, meeting the, doing the morning meet and greets, uh, just trying to think through, I don't, I'm trying to see if I can bring up the schedule from-
I might have it right here.
Hmm.
So that was just a coffee welcome.
Yeah.
That was the chief of police, the fire chief, uh, central office staff, a meeting with Superintendent Leclerc, director of business, director of technology, director of special ed, that was a full day. So then it was special ed, um.
How long were each of those meetings?
So, um, half hour each.
Mm-hmm.
Then it was the principals, then it was the assistant principals, then it was student representatives, and then the union.
And the union.
We were talking a half-day. And we were thinking, I think you were thinking, Liz, four hours?
Well, uh, I think that half an hour per, uh, group, per individual or group is a good idea, right? Um, I don't know that you're gonna pu- you're gonna put the two principals together, and then they're gonna visit the two school sites, which are close together, which is convenient, um, where they can meet students. I wouldn't give the students any less than half an hour. Is Superintendent Leclerc someone who should have a half an hour in that schedule? I'd like to, I, I'd like to say, let's settle on who they should meet, and then the schedule is what it is, uh, because they will not be here being interviewed in the evening, so they go home when that's finished.
Correct, right.
Have a meet and greet, public meet and greet, greet, and then go home.
So Superintendent Leclerc was a forty-five minute meeting. And the director of business was a forty-five minute meeting. Everything else was a half hour. I think those two are important. I think those two are important. I, I, I'm all for having them do that. We have the Business Manager there anyway. So it'd be just adding Dr. Leclerc.
So one, two, three.
Director of Student Services and Curriculum Person could meet together perhaps with the candidates for forty-five minutes?
Yeah.
They're, they're intricately tied together, so.
They are.
Yep. I think that's a good mesh.
And then I mean, what we could do is an hour at each of the schools where that is set up so that there's a half hour with the Principal and Assistant Principal or Principals for Mountain View, and then thirty minutes for our student time at each of those. But then and then we'd have to do then a public
Hmm.
meet and greet. And we probably want that at least forty-five minutes. We probably, I mean, that's what we've done, it's like a forty-five minute meet and greet at the public, right?
Yep. Yep.
So that's one, two, three.
Would there be anything stopping us from starting the meet and greet at, let's say, three or three thirty?
Well, it's just limitations on.
I know.
Who can attend?
Yep.
But either way, like, we had our quarter of five to five thirty, so I'm sure we there were people who worked till six who weren't able to make it.
Yeah.
I, I don't have, I know that trying to think what time it is. I'm just thinking that three thirty or four o'clock, that's fine. What do you think, Liz?
So, four, I would give them a full hour, and I would go, four to five wouldn't be a bad idea unless you decided on five to six, but four to five would give them somewhat of a break after visiting the schools and then go right into a meet and greet, right?
Yeah.
Well, if we're yeah, we can't do the schools too late, though, because they've got to go earlier in the day, because if we're including a meet and greet with students, students need to be there during that time. I don't think we had that in the, that was not a part of the schedule originally, I do not believe.
I think that if you have the folks talk with Superintendent Leclerc first, and then go to the schools to the Principals and Students, that also helps them around, you know, what they might, what kind of conversations they might want to have with the Sped and Curriculum Person, and possibly the Business Manager. I would, I would line it up that way, Superintendent Schools, before schools do what schools do and get super busy and backed up with things that go on every day, and then bring them back to the Central Office.
And the Union President last time was two thirty to three, which would fit in with that four to five, give an hour's break before you do a meet and greet.
And could, could we make space for teachers to, like, if Sean and a few teachers wanted to be there, is there a way to have a little teacher contingent?
Well, yeah, that's the Union.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we could have Union and Union Members.
Yep.
A special Union Member's kind of meet and greet, and then there are also the availability for the more additional meet and greet. This doesn't work time-wise, though, so I'm just trying to think this through. Again, we're saying we want to do this in a even if we're doing a five-hour time block, if we're saying Superintendent from twelve to twelve forty-five, then they go, then they get in the car and drive to the school and do an hour at each school, then getting back to Central Office at three. There would be the Business Director and three to three forty-five, and then Special Education and Director of Curriculum would be three forty-five together to four thirty. That's, it's, and then we're trying to still squeeze the meet and greet to start that at four. I think that has to start at four thirty.
Um, what time were you starting all that at?
Yeah.
I started at twelve, was trying to squeeze it, just trying to keep it to five hours.
Right, but I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is that for most of the school people, we should start earlier, ten or eleven, the, the latest, and get as many in during the school day. And the people who stay later are the Business Manager, Dr. Leclerc.
Yeah, no, all the, yeah, but I mean, all our Central Office is there later into the afternoon, it's just, again, we're trying to say we were doing this for a half-day meeting, and if we're trying to end right now, if we're ending at five, you're, you're starting at ten, that's almost a full day again, you're extending it out to a six-hour day. So.
You're giving them an hour in between from three to four to take their break.
No, there was no break in there, that was, that was Central Office time. There's no, there's no break in this right now, and that's, it doesn't fit, so.
Madam Chair, may I work with somebody in Central Office? Is there someone I can work with there so that we can look at folks' schedules and determine how best to make this happen? Yes. We don't want to say to folks in your district, you must meet at this time, we'd rather find a time that actually works with them.
Yeah, that would be Sue Colby.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I think this is doable. And I think we did plan on, on giving them a break from three to four and then doing the meet and greet from four to five.
Yeah, we can work a break in. I, I don't think that it's, creating this kind of a schedule is really not that difficult, it's just finding the best time first for the Superintendent and the Schools, right? And then finding out if others have conflicts and we can sort of shuffle them in the, in the slots that remain.
So it does sound like the difference, though, is what we're talking about doing is combining, so in order to shorten the day, though, to being from a full-day visit where we had it as originally the Superintendent visits, is that we're gonna combine some of those meetings, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna suggest that we combine the Director of Curriculum and the Special Education Director. You know, would we combine Business Manager, Business Director and Superintendent, I don't know. So that, but yeah, I think that we do need to just sort of say that we're trying to shorten it to more like a five to six-hour day as opposed to an eight-hour day, and leave it up to Sue and Liz to be able to come up with the, the actual schedule of that, as Sue did before for our Superintendent visits. Does that sound correct?
This will actually be the easiest, well, from my perspective, I know Sue has to make the phone calls in District, but I'm happy to work with her in any way that she wants me to, this, this is not a difficult thing to arrange, because once we have one schedule, we pretty much have them all, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, the hardest thing tonight was finding the days. Everything else will seem like a piece of cake.
Always got the next big conversation to have now.
There's always something waiting.
Okay, so are we feeling good then that we're about the schedule and for those five days and leaving it to Liz and Sue to work out?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think we know who we want. And basic, a basic timeline. So we'll let them work out the logistics.
Yeah, we will not stray from the folks you've named, those will be the folks that they visit, so.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to now move to discussing the four external candidates, then?
Yeah, we can. Absolutely. So did everybody have a chance to look at everything?
Yes.
Okay.
And does anybody want to? Begin with those.
What if we just go through each candidate and
Sure.
And just sort of put a yay or nay to each one as we go through it, or do we want to just lump them all and talk about the different pieces at the same time? How do you want to structure this, Cindy?
I, I'm flexible, I, I'm just open to discussion here.
I like the idea of going through each resume one by one, just to be able to keep track of who's who.
Yep, that works. So let's start with Roland. So Cindy, I'm just gonna sit quietly here unless you want me to say something about the candidates, I think that generally, and in a very thoughtful way, we, Glenn and I looked at some folks who are available here in Western Mass, who I talked to them all, they're willing, and they're certainly all capable of stepping in, in an interim way, right, and keeping things afloat.
So, and they're all public at this point, so we should, we need to name them and we can
Yes, Cindy, maybe you want to read a list of the names first, so that they are effectively made public?
Sure.
And I would just again ask everyone to be mindful that their names are public, they're out there working, and yeah.
So we have Roland Joyle, Marlene DeLeo, I changed my papers, Mary Jane Rixon, and then Maureen Bonenda. So those are the four we have. Or let's start with Roland. Anybody have any thoughts?
So he does have a Superintendent license.
Yep.
He has Superintendent Executive Director position at the Lower Pioneer Valley Education.
Correct.
He has Assistant Superintendent at the Chickapie Public Schools, as well as a Principal in that district at Chickapie High School, Assistant Principal at Putnam Vocational Tech High School in Springfield, and a Science Teacher. Now, we don't have lengths of time on each of those, so we don't know how exactly long each of those ten years were. But definitely a variety of experience, a variety of skills. And just since it'll probably come up other places, too, at, at the Superintendent level, working with a twenty-seven million dollar budget, and at a Superintendent, an Assistant Superintendent level, working at a, in the eighty million dollar range, almost ninety million dollar range. Which is Chickapie Public Schools.
My only question and comment, I mean, the resume looks like the, the experience is there, is about length of time in these positions. I'm assuming this person has lots of experience if they've been in these roles, but.
So Roland is at a place in his career where he's retiring.
So some experience, okay.
And, and, you know, he's so at, I guess, at his age, if he's able to retire with full, with eighty percent at his age, he started right out of college. Yeah, he's had some experience.
I have no objections to interviewing Roland.
All right, Mayor?
Um, I, I like his experience across different domains, as far as that the collaborative, vocational, you know, the background in science. I think it's, it's a good mix of experience in the different settings, I, I like that about the candidate and would like, like to interview.
Anybody else?
I'm, I'm totally open to this candidate, I like the range of experience, seems like a very, he's been around a while and knows his way in this position, so I'd be interested in talking more.
Liz, can I just ask, do you have estimate of years at the Collective and possibly also a Superintendent role at Chickapie Public Schools? Do you have that, or roughly even?
He's been three or four years at the Lower Pioneer Valley without looking at the date he was hired. And he was a good number of years in the Chickapie Public Schools in that Assistant Superintendent role. I hate to wage a guess, but I'd say a minimum of six years. He was pretty solid there in Chickapie for quite a long time.
Right. Well, I would also encourage us to interview him, so.
I agree, for all reasons that everybody has already stated, I think that's good.
Do we want to make votes on each of these, or are we efficient, to be official with these, or?
I mean, I'm okay with it, but I don't think we need to at this point. It's not like we're voting for the candidate, we're just really giving our feedback as to who we think we should interview.
Are we inviting them after this? Is this gonna be the?
Yes.
We discuss all four, let's make one motion with the, the folks who, okay.
I think so.
Okay.
So we have Marlene DeLeo.
Do you have anything to do with the overview again, just so that people?
Sure.
So we do have dates here, so she has a Doctorate of Education, she has her license as a Superintendent, she was, or is the Superintendent of Ware Public Schools for, is this eight years, I believe? I don't have what, just again, just trying to make apples-apples comparison, we don't have a budget level of what the Ware Public Schools district is, but, or the size of Ware, I don't know the size of Ware's district. But she then had three additional years as the Principal of the Junior High School, and well as three more years at the Principal of the Elementary School, and then four years as the Principal of an Elementary School in the Holyoke Public District. Assistant Principal, so I don't have to list out all of these, but Health Educator Coordinator, the Public Health, Public, Holyoke Public Schools. So, and as well as a Physical Education Teacher, so total of twenty-four, twenty-five odd years in split between Holyoke and Ware Public School districts.
Um, so I worked with Marlene back in the mid two thousands, when she was a Principal, and as she went up to Superintendent, and I, and I worked with her more in, it was one of the sites I supervised, but what I saw was she's a very even presentation and a lot of compassion and understanding around, not just special needs, but just kids who just need a little extra touch, you know, as far as helping them get into a class or whatnot. And she also was a Principal at Holyoke before that, and, I mean, just the school she was at in, in Holyoke. You know, they're, they're very challenging schools and and receivership and, and all of that, but she, yeah. I I like her experience through a whole, like through pre-K, I mean, to K to 12 that she's hands on in all of those areas. And she's actually been on the ground, like boots on the ground with each one of those. Ware is it's pretty small, and it's also a district that a couple of times has voted to give the school district less money than the state said they had to. So and she's had to put those budgets kind of, you know, those budgets together.
They have about 1,100 students, Marin, and the 2020 budget is on the DART analysis at about almost 19 million. So.
Thank you very much.
Are there thoughts?
I think the experience looks good. I'm also like looking down in some of her leadership roles and achievements. I think this speaks to what the mayor is just saying. Looks like she's focused on it was this awarding for narrowing the achievement gap for low income students. I think she, it looks like from this, she focuses on vulnerable populations, which seems great. I have no objections to interviewing.
Ben?
Uh, similar thoughts, looks, it looks really good, lots of experience. I I like this responsible, responsible, responsible on the on the resume. You know, and and the range going from superintendent experience down to, you know, down to being like, as the mayor said, boots on the ground. And in, you know, some difficult schools and potential districts. I'd like to see what, you know, what they could bring.
I agree.
I agree. I I have no no trouble. I think this is see, you thought this was gonna be our hardest part, Marin, right now? Maybe I'm speaking too soon, but I think it's gonna be okay. All right, Mary Jane Rixon.
So Mary Jane's list here, I just want to start, she has a she does have a superintendent professional certification. Her most current experience is a principal at Winchton High School, Winchton Murdoch, Winchton Public Schools Murdoch High School, where she's been for one year. Before that, she was the interim superintendent of schools at Northbrook Public Schools, which again, I know is definitely a small, a smaller school district. For a year before that, she was a year as the director of career and technical education path Bay Path Regional Vocational. She also did a year as an interim superintendent at Maynard Public Schools. And then two years at the director of curriculum and instruction at Athol Regional School District. And assistant superintendent director Pat Pathfinder Regional Vocational High School for five years, a dean of students in the Worcester regional vocational high school for five years. And then a number of many years, it looks like 15 odd years as a social studies teacher, peer mediation coordinator at the Springfield Public Schools. So I mean, I mean, one concern, I'll just throw it out there with this is lots of sort of one year pieces. It means her willingness to step in and help potentially as sort of these interim superintendent positions. But it's a lot of, a lot of different districts, a lot of different places for short periods of time. And it's just one flag that sort of came up for me.
Um, her, in the cover letter, when it talks about social emotional curriculum and her focus there, that intrigues me. And I love the idea of the learning walks. But I don't disagree with Marin about like the, I think that was a good way to put it. You know, stepping up to fill the gap in these different high schools, but it's a lot of jumping.
So Mary Jane has done a couple of stints as interim, and we know that she was successful in both of those districts. She's been attempting, or she did attempt for a while to try to come back to Western Massachusetts, which is where her family is. And, you know, found this place back in Winchton after her last stint in North Brookfield and decided she would settle back down and get sort of into that work in a high school with kids. She was slightly hesitant when I asked her about East Hampton. But she's got a unique experience set with having done that a couple of times already, right, for a one year interim. I mean, I did tell her there was the potential there, depending on what the committee decided in terms of the next search for an extension to two years.
Yeah, I, when I was looking through this, I was, I absolutely see the point of like, oh, that's a lot of movement, but to have somebody who has done this particular tricky one year position successfully two times. I put that in the checkmark of like, that's intriguing. That could be helpful to have someone who knows just what they're walking into.
I think it's also, I I as like it's jumping, but but she, she was at Putnam from one, 1990 to 205. And then she was the assistant principal from 205 to 07 in the same school. So I just yeah, as I look around, quote unquote, the jumping around, I mean, the majority, she was a counselor in at a Vokes School at Putnam. So I I think, I don't know, I'm less concerned now about the jumping, you know, she kind of worked her way up to assistant principal, dean of students, assistant superintendent, director, director of curriculum, interim, yeah, I, yeah, so that I would just I guess I re-categorize or reframe my initial comments after seeing her being at Putnam for so long.
You know, I didn't mean to imply that she didn't have stability. I just think in the, in those leadership roles, they're much, they're a number of short term roles. That's all I'm mourning. Certainly significant period of time, you know, at the Springfield Public School District, for sure.
That's, I hadn't thought of it that way, Marin. It was helpful to think about it in that, with that perspective. There were a few things that popped out. I, the range of experience again really stood out to me, but in the letter, this, this, she mentions that similarly, I've worked to step forth a vision that pledges digital literacy to support instruction at all levels. That's a big, that's a big deal. That's an important one. And then a little further down, she says, in my last three positions, I've been specifically tasked with improving culture and climate. I am proud to say that this task is accomplished in each district, and I've had the honor of working there. To me, creating culture and climate mired in respect and collaboration is key to any organization. When staff feel safe and valued without fear of retribution, they shine. And I, that to me sings out because a lot of teachers and parents have expressed direct concerns about these things. So there's something in there that feels really relevant and potential like a useful fit, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I would like to interview and just hear the different viewpoint or, you know, her different perspectives on the interim, being an interim and and the culture work. Really, and again, the the Vokes stuff, I I just, I see it's assumption, but somebody who's got some real ground experience in Vokes might have a different perspective of paths for students in high school.
So true, yep.
Yeah, and we're looking at five years as an assistant superintendent, a lot of different titles. Interim positions. I I look at this and I don't, I don't see a concern in terms of trajectory. I see a lot of principals and superintendents I've seen over the years do that kind of movement and the variety of experiences is what really helps. So this is fine with me too, so. Uh, let's see, are we all saying yea?
I'm yea, yeah.
Yea.
Okay.
All right. I'm willing to interview.
Yes. Okay, all right. So then we have Maureen Benenda.
Um, just to do a similar cap, so she has just want to make sure certification again. She doesn't have a certification for superintendent. She is currently the interim superintendent. Uh, my brain is suddenly not being able to pronounce this. What was that?
Quay Bog.
Quay Bog, thank you. And prior to that, she was four years, five, no, five, six years superintendent of the Worcester Public Schools district. Before that, eight years as a principal of the high South High Community School in Worcester. Assistant principal in the Worcester District, principal, again, site administrator, system site administrator for community schools after programming, for the MCAS programming, so and then all the way back to 18 more years as a teacher of moderate special needs in Bloomington School and South High Community School and the Worcester Public School, so extensive amount of time at, in the Worcester Public School District. And a lot of different, number of different roles again. Including extensive, yeah, a lot of time, both superintendent and principal roles, so.
I mean, I, with her, I mean, the Quay Bog versus Worcester and again, I mean, maybe it's new ideas around organizational development or whatnot that she would bring to the table. I mean, Quay Bog's not that big, right? It's smaller, regional. So she has experience in both sides district. And I like that her professional association and her contacts with the community seem really strong.
I'm also pleased to see her background in special education. I would, I would be interested in interviewing.
Ben?
The experience here obviously is, you know, maybe biggest of all four so far. I I'm totally open to this person. I like, I, this was the only name I'd heard before, like just sort of following Worcester a little bit, and you know, Worcester's a complicated city. And her name is is interesting in that, in that context, so, but I'm, but certainly this is somebody who knows their way around a district, and I'd be more than willing to have a listen and see, see what she's got to say.
So Marin, what are, what are your thoughts?
Oh, I I certainly think she is a worthwhile candidate to interview. I was hoping that we would be able to cut out one of them, but you know, clearly we want to interview.
That's why you thought it might be difficult. They're all very different candidates and what is it's gonna be sort of, you know, I think people are capable of stepping in here and doing a very good job, but who is it that sort of works with East Hampton? Right.
That's what I was thinking, like, these are three very, I mean, just on their resumes, never mind personalities. The, I I don't know the personalities, but just on the resume, all seem to have a great body of experience, but very different.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape. So do we want to make a motion to accept all four for an interview?
I make a motion that we extend the offer to interview all four of these submitted candidates thus far.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChappelle, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Mayor, uh, Marin?
Marin Goldstein, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. I think that does our whole agenda for tonight.
Well, so let me just ask, timing wise, so our external candidates were closed now, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And internal candidates have until next Tuesday, the 16th, at our next meeting to have submitted?
Yes.
Are we going to have time to review? I mean, should we at least give ourselves a day? What, what was put on the actual posting? Because that doesn't give us any time to review. I mean, obviously, we know, we know our internal candidates to some degree more, you know, but did it actually stay through the 16th or?
Sorry, I have a 150 pound Newfoundland who's making themselves known. She's usually outside, I apologize. So let me see what went out. Yeah, so Marin, while Cindy's looking, just to be clear, you know, Glenn had put some names forward and I had two days to reach out to everybody and they made their decision that, you know, they were, would certainly be available July 1. They understand the timeline here. Is a quick turnaround.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I mean, these are four interesting candidates, for sure.
So what you're saying, if I'm understanding you, we would like to it's since it went out today, do the same thing that Liz did, basically know by Friday?
I think that seems a reasonable amount of time for any internal candidate to consider putting forward themselves and and then that would give us a few days to review resume and.
I could get that message out tomorrow easily.
To limit it a little bit, yeah, that seems like a good.
I think that's that makes sense.
Um, and then, okay, so then the next last piece is our next meeting is about the interview, interview questions that we're going to ask. In the previous process, we had a list of those in advance and we sort of had ability to go through them and sort of pick our top three questions that we were sort of wanting to do, and those got organized by Sue to then put back to us, and then we sort of went in and sort of reviewed those questions and consolidated those questions. Liz, you were gonna send us questions, is that correct? Did I miss an email or is that just still coming?
Uh, that could be a misunderstanding on my part. I thought you said you all had them. I can certainly get them out to you tonight. That's probably my misunderstanding, Marin. I'll make sure you have them. The other thing that I want you to remember is that if you're doing the questions together as a group, it's all an open session, right?
Yep.
And the other option would be to send your top three questions to the chair or to some other member to make a determination on questions, and then those final questions come back to be accepted at an open meeting. So there's two ways you could do it. If you love group editing, have at it. So the way we did it last time was everybody picked three. And those are the questions that we asked.
Okay.
Some of them were the same questions, so then we just met and decided if there was something else we needed to do. We do, Marin, we, we're using the same questions that we used for the superintendent interviews, so.
Thought we were, I thought, so I thought what we'd asked Liz was, was that there was specific questions for interim positions in terms of that, that there's a different perspective in terms of what we're engaging there, right? So I thought, I did think that we were gonna be shared questions that were, had that focus. And then I did think, I mean, we're not the same group as we were before. Uh, as we were before, and so there's going to be questions that are not. Um, that would not be asked if it was just the the five of us. So. Um, I think we do want to relook at the questions and not just say the exact questions that we asked last time or the questions we're going to ask this time. Individually. Um, and uh. And to your point, Liz, I think that, you know, people do have, do have, you know, we've done public. Uh, publicly, we've asked the questions that we were going to ask, you know, and so I think that it's okay that the candidates know coming in. Roughly the kind of questions we're going to ask. So, you know, or exactly, and it's just, it's still going to be that sort of um. Engagement in the in the moment with each individual candidate. So.
Sure.
Their foreknowledge.
Anyone you're interviewing should be able to answer whatever questions you put to them, especially particularly with this group. And as you're speaking, um, I do apologize, we did talk about that. And I got wrapped up in getting day on the hill with my colleagues off the ground and it slipped by me. So um I'll get them out to you tonight.
Oh, okay. So there is a different list.
Uh, there's a, I'm looking sort of in Dropbox while you're talking and I see a very short list and I will look around for a little bit more. My colleagues love Dropbox. Uh, so I'll pull out what's in there and send them on to you. Again, uh, you know, looking at an interim is much different than than interviewing for a permanent superintendent. Yet those questions around and to your point, Mayor and Megan, around culture and climate. Emotional, emotional learning uh is certainly on the top of everyone's list and needs to continue no matter what else uh goes on in the district, right?
Yep.
So what I would recommend for us to do then is to to look at. The in the interview questions that Liz sends us, the questions that we already individually chose to ask in the previous. You know, iteration of the interviews and then also look at the questions that were asked by other members who are not here anymore. And see if there's a different set of three interviews that we feel then most drawn to individually asking. So I wouldn't, you know, for example, if that sounds like a good way, then I wouldn't say, oh, well, I want to take Megan's question because, you know, but. But it it the challenge that she may choose not Megan may choose not to ask one of her three questions that she asked before that I think is critical too. So. I, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, you know, as a, I'm not sure the best way to determine this. But I think we should discuss that right now. So then we're ready for our meeting uh next week.
So I'm comfortable with us um just getting those questions, taking the time to figure out um. What changes we might want to make. And then. Discussing it, I I don't think we need to submit just three questions each or five questions each. Um, I think we could pick the questions that we really want, come prepared. And then propose the extra questions that we think need to be put in there. Does that, does that make sense?
Okay, so we're just going to discuss it much more open ended next next week, then is what you're saying.
Does that, does that seem comfortable or do you want that that um limitation of?
I think let's just group group work it next time.
Yeah. As long as we've looked at the interim questions and we've looked at what we asked. We can hold true to the ones that are really important for to for us. And then add whatever extras that we want. So I think we'll come prepared. I don't think we'll be starting from scratch.
Well, and what about the new members? Um, they're. What's their role in this?
Well, there aren't any new members right now.
Right, but I but I mean, for the interview itself, like, well, in in terms of questions, just thinking about the way we did it before. Like, like we all had our own questions ready, like, will the new members have questions or will?
No, they're not going to be able to. We're going to have our questions done now. Next week.
So should we like two questions, four extra questions or something that they would be?
What I suggest, what I would suggest, and we've done in the past, um, when I've been on. In my own district, um superintendent search committees, is that at the end you can alter who's going to ask which question.
Yes.
So we we decide on the questions now. But it doesn't have to be written in stone who's going to ask that particular question. And so we'll have some flexibility to say, oh, okay, well, I can, I can have somebody else ask this one.
So, but that opens the question then. So we're seeing that. We'll have had no meetings with it. I don't know who I, again, I don't know how this process is going to be determined. But we're going to have no meetings with any of these whoever is voted to be members and they're going to suddenly be a part of. The interviews and decision making process on the superintendent?
Yes. So they would, they would, um, if the vote happens on the thirty first of May. They would get sworn in the next day on the first. And then they would begin the interview process with us. And we would, um. You know, and we could probably talk about it ahead of time, which ones we are, we really want to ask and which ones we want to leave open for somebody else. And then, yeah, they're just going to have to jump in. I mean, that is the nature of filling in these slots with um the timelines that we have.
I mean, why, I'm just going to ask it. I, because again, I, there's no agenda here. I want to be clear to anybody in the public, like, I don't even know who's going to be. Which names are going to be put forward. I'm just thinking from a. Process kind of, you know, uh, experience. Um, I I'm not clear why they have to be. Voted and appointed the very next day as opposed to the next school committee meeting, which would be the thirteenth.
That is really interesting, but um President Gomez and Mayor, tell me if I'm wrong, said that once we vote. Um, their position takes over immediately. And so the very next day they would be sworn in.
Yeah, he did say that this afternoon when we were talking.
Yeah.
It's probably part of your city charter, uh, Maureen.
So um, they, the, they would be part of the decision making process, but not in the interviews, but not part of the questions. Uh, when we decide on them. So we would just hold that, you know, know that there's going to be some flexibility as to who's going to be asking what. And and so what we would do, it is, it's a very, you know, two things are happening at once. That's what's making this so unusual. You're going to fill two vacancies and we are going to um interview and hire an interim. And because of everybody's schedule, it's not just our schedule, it's the schedule with with city council. It it becomes complicated, but that is, that is the quickness. Now, what will help. Is that um. Once they're sworn in on the first. Then we would definitely, I would definitely make sure that they had the resumes. And the list of questions that will be asked at the interview. So they would get that on the first. And so they would, they should be ready on the third. We'll also be announcing. The timeline as it's set up and make sure that people know ahead of time. So. Any new member is going to understand the days and the times that we're working with. So nothing will be a surprise, shouldn't be a surprise. Does that help? Does that clear it up a little? Okay.
Yeah, they're just.
That person who, you know, the two people are going to have to. By accepting the role for whatever this is going to be, a s- a seven month interim position. They're going to also then have to. Pledge to be available for those four days that we've now set up as well that are immediately happening.
Um.
Because either, and you're either going to be available for all four days or you're going to be available for zero of those days. You can't, we definitely cannot have them be. Partially in on a couple of interviews, but not on all of the interviews. So.
Right.
Um.
May I? So there's a couple of things, Maureen. I'm assuming these interviews will be taped, number one. Right? Will they be recorded? Because they should be recorded if somebody is present. You actually don't have, so the good news is we're getting very good at these sort of virtual meetings and recording so that people can watch, right? It's actually, uh, you are not allowed to sort of tell an elected or appointed official they can't vote on something. So you have to be careful around that. Um, you, you certainly can give them access to the recordings. Somebody can be available to answer their questions and help to get them up to speed and that would be the best case scenario.
Yeah, I think what Maureen's really saying is that um we're going to be meeting on uh the tenth to talk about process. And I think what he's basically saying is that whoever is going to try. Um, to be the next uh school committee member should know that there's a commitment.
Yes.
A time commitment um and a lot on our agenda right now. So I think that's what, Maureen, I don't want to speak for you, but does, is that really where you were going?
Yeah, that it's, it's not to step into a role that's, you know. Oh, it's almost the summer and it's not going to be, it's going to be a casual support role. It's that they're stepping in and if. If that's the case that they're immediately being sworn in the very next day, then they're sworn in and jumping in the deep end immediately with. Multiple interviews over a weekend and a determination of our superintendent for the interim.
Yeah, so they're going to count on their colleagues on the committee to be supportive and um.
Right.
And helpful.
Yeah.
And and again, we would send those um, the questions and the resumes out very quickly the next day. So that they have at least a day or two before we begin. To start to look at all of that.
So there's just one more thing as you all go about the question development. Um, just remember you have ninety minutes. Think about your total number of questions and how many minutes per per question you want to give the candidate to respond, right? Four minutes, believe it or not, can be rather tight over the course of a long interview. Um, and if it's four minutes and some questions are certainly, uh, you know. Um, less complicated than others, you know, if you have multi-part questions, you're going to want to think about the total number of questions. That you're giving a candidate. This is an interim. And since you're not meeting with them during the day that they're in district, this is should have a period certainly of interview. But something that will also allow for some conversation, right?
Yeah.
Give and take between the candidates and members just to have that opportunity to get a feel for them.
So it should be a little less than we did before.
It should be a little less rigorous, right? They're going to keep things moving. They're going to address any crises that that occur, but um. You want to know you have a good fit for the district so that you're comfortable moving forward with your your search, uh, whenever it is that you want to kick that off. Yeah. It it shouldn't be a sort of a fast paced interview. I would think. These folks have all done the work, so they know the answers, but uh, you know, everybody presents differently in an interview as as I never uh am surprised to see.
I know. Okay, I'm looking and I think we covered everything we really need to for now. Um, if anything else comes up, we can handle that on our work session. But it looks like. Um, we've got the days, the times. We have the site visits, we know who's, who's they're going to see. We are going to get the new list of questions for um. From Liz tonight and then we're going to compare them, come prepared for our next meeting and we'll get our questions together.
Yeah, and Sue and I are going to work out those schedules and uh we won't interact with that again, but you'll all get copies of those schedules.
Sounds great. I think we're good. Is there anything that anybody else has as a concern? I will get that message out to Sue about the deadline for Friday, the twelfth.
Mm hmm.
And I think that's it, I really do.
The one other thing that I would throw out there is just again, uh, as we were very clearly stating, these are going to be. Broadcast, uh, recorded interviews. And since we're doing them on a Saturday and Sunday and Monday evenings. Um, I would just suggest that if if you or Sue could reach out to um the East Hampton, the public media. Uh, or whoever else is going to be managing those interviews um that we get on their calendar as quickly as possible. Um, and then are we doing those in person? So like we did the other superintendent interviews, are we all in person at those three evenings?
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all. Um, we did, wait a minute, um, are we sure for dates that everybody's going to be actually here? Okay, that's right, because we spent probably an hour figuring out when that was going to be. So, yeah, I I'm all for us doing it in person like we did.
But we need, we just need to make sure with East Hampton Media then that they're going to publicly broadcast it because we didn't have that piece of the component last time. So we want to have it publicly broadcasted. It doesn't have to be the very, that instant. Public broadcast because there is going to still be a week. Um. But I just want to make sure that that's being set up so that we don't get surprised by that again.
Yeah.
And we have four people we're interviewing um over three nights. Is that, is that the idea? Or because it, because I thought it was two and two originally, or we were going to do two interviews in a row, back to back? Is that? How's that working? Because I, I'm just curious, like.
Well, we don't even know the final numbers yet.
Right, right, so we might get more.
Candidates.
Yeah, and we're also hopeful that at least the four you have could make either a Saturday or Sunday.
Well, or Monday. I think, I mean, I think, yeah, Liz, I think you're going to, you're going to reach out to them immediately, right? And start to hone in on who can do which nights and that that we may end up with. You know, if we only end up with four interviews, we're good, we could have, you know, one night with two and a two other nights with one interviews each. I think that that's a possibility, right?
Yeah.
So.
Right. Yep.
And Cindy, you'll let me know what uh meetings you want. Uh, me or someone from MASC to attend just sort of to be available for questions, right?
You mean the meetings going forward?
Yeah.
Um, I. Uh, I'd be willing to listen to everybody else, but I think since our next meeting is just to look at questions. And we already have the guidance of how many, figuring out how many and how many minutes. I don't think we need Liz there.
And we. You can just let me know with an email and if I can't make it, um. Um, you know, my Glenn has said that he will do his best or somebody else from the association will be available. Just let us know. And we'll work, we'll do our best to work around everybody's schedule.
Okay, are you feeling like you want you, you want to ask for that now?
I think that you all can, you know, let us know what if you want to set the interviews, certainly you can handle the questions. If you just want somebody there. It's up totally up to you. You, it's, this is not your first rodeo and you can do it, but we're happy to make sure somebody's there if you want us there just to answer questions, right?
I think the only piece from my perspective, I think, yeah, we can process ourselves to and manage ourselves to come up with questions. I think the. Piece here is that, I mean, we're meeting tomorrow night and then we meet next Tuesday night. And then we're doing these interviews. So I think the only piece is that if there's feedback of, you know, I don't know how quickly you're going to get feedback from these four candidates about which nights they're choosing. Um, any internal person is then going to just have to fit into what the other two slots that are available. But if there's any issues with those three nights, if if we end up being that the all four candidates can't meet on one of those nights. Um, then. We're going to need to know that sooner rather than later because we're going to be juggling other scheduling. So um. I guess that's just the piece that if for us and because of scheduling meetings. Obviously is a challenge and has a certain amount of day hours in advance to be able to schedule that kind of a public hearing to be able to even have this conversation about scheduling. Um, I don't know if that's something that you can imagine we might be able to get word on by tomorrow evening.
Yes. So I'll send, just because of the time and I know. Yes. So I'll send, just because of the time and I know that, um, everybody who reports to a school or school district is there very early in the morning. I'll shoot out an email tonight and follow up with a phone call in the morning. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, and then let Cindy know. So maybe we'll even know that we've got certain slots filled for those meet interviews and such.
Yep, I can actually, as soon as I have responses from all four, I'll communicate with Cindy and Sue. And so one of them can send up a roundup email to you all.
Correct. That works.
Okay.
I think we're in good shape.
And we guess we could always talk if, if, at that point, we can talk about it a little bit more tomorrow evening and other business. Um, if we need to look at schedules again, or if anything else needs to come up because of that.
All right, that sounds good.
What is it they say about those in public education? We must be nimble. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Liz.
Candidates, I'm excited for you.
Thank you. All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All right, um, Ben.
Ben Hershey, good night.
Mayor.
Mayor Lachapelle, good night.
Megan.
Megan Harvey, good night.
Mary.
Mary Goldstein, good night.
And Cindy Kuzinski, good night. All right, good night, everybody. I'll see you all tomorrow.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.